Okay, we'll bring the June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five council work meeting to order. Item one oh.
Mr. Mayor and council members, we have a couple items to discuss here this evening. If we get to all of them, great. If not, we'll do as we normally do and kind of move it to the next one. We've got basically two complaints that came in and wanted to establish a kind of a process for vetting these complaints to determine, you know, if they're valid or not and to actually have a process in place so that it's not just a complaint received and complaint filed type of scenario, but we're actually considering it. So, Mr. Mayor, we've got two, one that names you and one that names me. Which one would you like to take first?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, well, I'll be the, I'll be the first one then. So, the complaint was submitted on June ninth and it states essentially that on May twelfth, work meeting and May twenty-eighth, council meeting where Mr. Look didn't provide all the information on our six-horse I U P, the information he provided was misleading. I've got that complaint up here. Oh, that one's yours, okay. So essentially, on the twenty-eighth of May, I sent to the council all this documentation. This is may not be in order, but in January two thousand and five, this is an extension of the I U P for one year. It states under there that the interim use permit expires one year from issue date in two thousand. We do not have a, another I U P that was issued post-two thousand and the I U P was started in ninety-nine. These were the minutes that are the agenda that was provided and the minutes that were provided, this is for nineteen ninety-nine. And these were the minutes. The motion, who made it and everything else. This is all the information essentially that I'm presenting here this evening is what I sent to you guys on the twenty-eighth. That's all the information that we have. So, I'd like to clarify that the information was not withheld from you, that it was not misleading. In fact, you've gotten everything that I have on, on the matter. And, and that was what the decision was based out. We then had the mayor, I'm sorry, the attorney at the time, Mr. Larson, kind of address how stacking I U Ps is not something we can do here. In other words, the current I U P with two horses would have been the controlling I U P at that point. You can't have an I U P for six horses in two thousand and then come back and say, I want another I U P and then another one, another one, and so on and so forth until you have more horses than are allowed per property or according to our code. So essentially, this is just a presentation of the information and I will leave it up to you guys to discuss what you want to do with this. If there's a consensus to move forward with this complaint in any capacity or to dismiss it, I'll leave that up to you guys.
Well, I have a question. What if somebody from the city tells the owner that, okay, you have this I U P, but these are a different type of horses or animal control horses. You need another I U P to cover animal control. And so it's not stacking and that's their understanding.
Our code, city code, does not specify whether it's animal control horses or it's a horse or a number of horses. And it goes into specificity in terms of the amount of acres you need, the amount of pasture land you need, how to properly care for an animal of this size, and that's why the code is established that way. My understanding, I was not here, but my understanding was the six-horse, one had expired because it was not renewed, came back later for a two-horse and, and lo and behold, there's eight there now. So, if one was not renewed, as we have no record of any renewals and certainly they can bring forward any sort of renewal, then, then that expires. That, that I U P ceases to exist under the conditions of that I U P. And, and then when they come back and they say, we'd like a I U P, they name the number of horses that they want. They should have named eight if they wanted eight or whatever the case is and then people could have deliberated on if that number was appropriate for the acreage. But the point of this evening, per the complaint, was that I was misleading. This is all the information we have and that, and that I didn't provide all the information. That was the complaint. I don't know if any other information we could have provided, essentially.
So what other information are they saying was not provided?
It's a good question. It's a good question because we have nothing on file.
Can you, can you scroll back up to the complaint? Well, I guess my question would be what information was left out and can that be provided? Evidence either by the complaint or?
You know, Mr. Mayor and council members, I would guess if they had other information, they would have come forward with that information. But their information is probably similar to what our information is. I think it's not so much if there's other information, it's whether aimed at me as to whether I was misleading and withheld information. That's the complaint. Any other questions on that?
Well, like Brian said, I think this is, it's pretty vague because they ain't presenting everything they're looking for out of this. It should have been spelled out a lot better, basically saying what information wasn't in place.
So if there is any other information that would be related to this complaint, I would like that to be provided to the city.
No problem. If they want to bring forward information, if they have other information, that'd be fine. We don't have it, though.
Any other discussion up? Don't want to do a move forward until we have better information or?
Well, if there is any other information, we'd like to see it.
Right.
I mean, that, that's pretty much the consensus.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, that would pertain to the decision that you guys made on repealing the I U P if there was other information. This specifically applies to the administrator in withholding information or misleading.
Well, what you've got listed up there and everything, I don't see anything that's misleading or not represented here. I mean, moving forward, I think we dismiss this unless they can come up with exactly what they believe is missing.
I'd say keep it open until, say, the next meeting and for them to, for an opportunity for them to submit any information, any relevant information and go from there.
I, I think we're conflating two issues here. If they have additional information, you can bring back a case to reconsider the motion to, well, it's a little late to reconsider the motion, but you can definitely have a case to consider an I U P for them if they have, you know, reinstating their I U P or whatever the case may be. I don't know if the attorney has more.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. From a procedural standpoint, your decision on the I U P has already been made and it is too late in the process to issue a reconsideration on that. Your, your time would have lapsed certainly at the last meeting. With regard to, you know, the, the matter at hand, the decision is limited to whether or not the complaint against Mr. Look is substantiated or not and whether you have the information today or not, you know, that's up to you and how you want to handle the complaint as a complaint. With regard to an I U P in the future, that would have to be based upon a new application from the resident based upon whatever information they submit as part of that application and it would be decided independent of the history of the prior application. Though, of course, the prior history may be presented as part of the rationale for seeking the I U P. Does that clarify the, the three different sort of procedural questions that are kind of being bundled together here?
So moving forward, what do you want to?
So, we'd have potentially two options right now. Either dismiss it until more information comes along or keep it open until more information comes along. If we dismiss it and they provide more information, do they have to resubmit a complaint?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mundle, council, that is, the details of that question are sort of answered by the way you discuss it and the way you decide it, right? So you could choose to do nothing with this complaint. You could table it until next meeting, you know, pending additional information. You could choose to dismiss it out of hand and then they'd need to file a new complaint if you dismissed it. If you tabled it for a date certain, that would leave it open for that amount of time. Or you could choose to accept the complaint and investigate on, on your own merits. But there isn't, to, to answer the question the way you asked it, I guess there isn't a hard and fast if this, then that process.
I, I think you answered, but essentially we can table it or if we dismiss it, then they have to resubmit the complaint.
If you dismiss it, they'll have to resubmit, correct.
Do we table at work meetings? We're not voting on anything.
Yeah, this is really just a discussion, but because you're directing staff, you can, you can provide them with instruction to investigate further. So if you choose to go that direction now, you can give that instruction to staff. If you, you know, don't want to do that at this time, then you can, as Mr. Look indicated, let him know that he doesn't need to look into it any further.
Well, personally, I think that is worded very vague and I would like to see the specifics of what they were, are talking about. The specific information not provided, the, yes, whatever is missing, I would like to see what it's going, what it is, what they are complaining about because this is vague.
So if you'd like to table it essentially?
Then let's table it.
Anybody in agreement? Table it. All right, we'll table this item.
Okay.
See if anything else comes forward from it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the second complaint is a complaint naming yourself about Robert's Rules of Order. Ensures meetings are fair, efficient and orderly, protecting the rights of all members and the mayor Anderson is failing to do that. Same complainant on this and I did copy Robert's Rules of Orders, which is a lengthy manual parliamentary procedure that governs most boards of directors, which was first created in eighteen seventy-six by Henry Robert, actually. And set of codes and rules, ethics that help groups hold orderly meetings and allow the majority to rule while allowing minority voices to be heard. And going down a little further, I think is where the complainant lifted this information. Right here, it says, tips and reminders for chairpersons. Robert's Rules of Order was developed to ensure the meetings are fair, efficient, democratic and orderly. A skilled chairperson allows all members to voice their opinions in an orderly manner so that everyone in the meeting can be, can hear and be heard, okay? What we're talking about here, when it refers to this word right here, members. Members are the five of you. Not the public, not people approaching the podium, not somebody who has an I U P taken away from them or has an ax to grind or anything else. It's you people. And, and your voice and your opinion needs to be handled in an orderly manner so that everyone can be heard, the majority and the minority. And I think that's where the confusion comes in this, in this complaint, which states basically, implies basically that the rights of all members were not protected and that it wasn't very efficient and orderly. Again, a complaint that is, was submitted and we need to consider it and, and I, I think once it, once it clears up in terms of what Robert's Rules is, you know, implied to apply to, the implication of who it applies to, I think, I think it, it's clear that it has to with you folks. That as a chair, you wouldn't cut somebody off that wants to speak or not recognize somebody that wants to speak on a certain topic. Anyways, also looking for direction on what you want to do with this.
Well, to me, Robert's Rules is, is a set of guidelines, basically. Our packets are, are all set up by it and everything, but we have rules, procedures and other policies that supersede some of it in there when it comes to like our guidelines for public forums and everything else. So, I mean, the city sets it up this way and we follow it, we're, we're following the rule.
Well, I, again, I think this may be a little vague. It's a general, generalization. He's not following it. I, I'd like to know how, have it be more specified and what way, what actions did the mayor take that he was failing or he violated them?
I mean, I, I understand your, your need for, for clarification. We really don't have a complaint form that goes back to the complainant to please specify what you're talking about. I mean, it's, it's the basis of what's written right here. And we get to look at that and determine if what was written, what was complained officially complained about is legitimate. And if it's not, dismiss it. If it is, figure out how to correct it or whatever the case is, but.
I can make a comment because somebody called me and made a, I don't know, it's not a complaint, just kind of whining about it. But they just, their, their problem was that some people got more time than others. I think that was a big thing that I heard.
That's at the public forum?
Yeah.
Okay, this is, this is just rules of order as it relates to running a meeting. Public forum is, is quasi. That's kind of at the discretion of the, of the mayor. I mean, the mayor can extend it if he'd like or not.
Yeah, I was just thinking maybe that's what this, I'm just trying to read into the complaint. I have no idea.
In this case, we could dismiss it, but encourage the applicant who submitted it to resubmit it with specified information. Would that sound accurate?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mundle, council. Part of the process here is to let the council know that a complaint has been filed for some event at a meeting. You know, in, in this case, for a procedural breach of an unspecified nature. It's somewhat different than the last complaint insofar as I don't know what you're going to find that isn't already alleged. And so I'm, I'm reluctant to set this pattern of, of leaving things open until they are conclusively closed. I mean, at this point, you can look at it and say, either we want to keep it open because we think there's something there and we might learn more about it that we're concerned about, or frankly, this is just not a big deal. Nothing happened. We haven't seen anything that merits further discussion. And that's sort of a balancing test informally that you all take on here on the council. And if it just doesn't seem like there is anything there, you don't need to feel compelled to table it.
But, yeah, I'm not, in this instance, I'm not suggesting tabling it. But if we dismiss this one, does the applicant have the option to resubmit this issue with specific information that, can, can the applicant resubmit?
Well, Mr. Mayor, council, in this case, the applicant is a complainant, correct? So someone always sort of has the ability to lodge a complaint about the way they've been treated by the city. Certainly meritless complaints over time will build that sort of understanding of what the complainant is complaining about and whether there's a, you know, merit behind it. But it doesn't receive the same level of scrutiny or protection that, that an applicant would for, say, a land use application or something of that nature. So, so I quibble technically to call it an applicant or, you know, in that sense, but you have a complainant. They filed a complaint. I think any complainant would want to be heard and make sure the council knows that the complaint came in. What you do with it is, of course, up to you. And the person you asked to directly answer your question, they would have the ability to continue filing complaints at some point. Meritless complaints might constitute harassing behavior, but I'm not saying this is there nor am I suggesting it will go there.
Okay.
I propose dismissal.
Is that the consensus of the council?
At this time.
Okay, we'll move to dismiss that. Moving on to two point oh.
Okay. Find that one here quickly. Okay, Mr. Mayor and council members, we have before us here kind of the rules of conduct that we've been practicing at East Bethel here as it relates to those that approach the podium and for public comment. We want to review these, make sure they're still applicable for this evening and see if there's any additions or subtractions that you want to make. But essentially, it says that those who wish to address the city council must sign up. Do so before the citizen input questions part of the meeting begins. You must be current residents of East Bethel, Minnesota and should state their name and address before addressing their topic. Non-citizens will be allowed to speak at the mayor's discretion. Mayor will invite speakers to the podium and they are asked to clearly speak into the microphone. Speakers are limited to three minutes to present their comments or questions. If there are multiple residents who wish to address the same topic, they should choose a spokesperson to speak for them. And at its choice, the city council may simply listen to comments or may engage in dialogue with the residents. Is there any changes that anyone would like to make to these or is this going to be the, the rules we want to proceed with this evening?
Well, number three is not being enforced.
What I can do, Mr. Mayor, is I can set an alarm for three minutes and when it goes off, that'll be an indication to the speaker that the three minutes have expired and they should wrap it up.
I'll have a timer going and then at thirty seconds, I'll tell them to wrap it up.
Okay, if you want to do that.
That work? Everybody in agreement on that then? All right. Three point oh.
I'll be abstaining from this discussion item and stepping down from the dais.
Mr. Mayor and council members, last meeting, last work session, we discussed Whispering Aspen and it was asked that we bring it back to, to try and find some sort of finality to it before it kind of gets, I guess postponed indefinitely like it has many, many years and, and times before that. So essentially, we have a, I think we have kind of a scenario in which we've talked about the contract in the past. We know that the contract omits some information and is clear on other parts of information. And there's multiple points that can range from, there's road, road dollar, you know, discussions that we've had on this. There are using of the facility, there is operating costs of the facility. And, and essentially, we had two letters that went out to B D M Construction. One was concerning the, the road deficiency amount and the other is concerning kind of the, call it the operating cost of the facility. And when we talk about operating costs, we're referring to electricity and water and sewer and, and their portion of, you know, cleaning, you know, adding it all up. And I think we came to, there was a letter specific to that. It came to a letter in the amount of, let me just see if it's here. We called it CAMs or Common Area Maintenance. And came up with a, a monthly rent in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars per month payable the first of each month. This covers the CAMs, it covers electricity, covers internet, covers water usage, sewer usage, their portion of mowing, cleaning, snow plowing, that sort of thing. Does not cover a sign that's out front that the contract doesn't identify either, but could very well cover that as well. And the, the purpose for bringing this is to try and come to, I think last time we had a little bit of a heated meeting and the goal was to kind of let cooler minds prevail. And hopefully that's the case here this evening and, and we can come to some sort of finality on this. Our options, of course, being legal, which is, I think, your most expensive option or agreement to cover some of the operating costs. I've, I've had conversations with some of you, if not all of you, with regards to the roads and some of the complexities dating back to two thousand and four on the roads. You know, roads can be considered in this discussion or can be part of the agreement if you want. In other words, everyone gives something and, and, and we come to an agreement on that. So just wanted to keep this front and center in terms of trying to get this plane landed so that as a community, we can move on and not continue to kick this football around every single year.
So in this, we've got what, how many different issues? We've got the roads, you've got the rental. I mean, I think we need to tackle each one on an individual basis. We'd probably gain more common ground going that route. You know, and trying to lump it all into one deal. We're just fighting back and forth over it. Another question I have is, is this going to break the contract or how is this going?
Mr. Mayor and council, the contract does not speak to common area maintenance in terms of, it doesn't, it, the contract says that, they can correct me certainly if I'm wrong and I'm not trying to put words in anyone's mouth here, but essentially says that they have use of office space, something to that effect. And it doesn't define how much office space, square footage or anything else. And the contract does not say that they get free electricity and free internet and free operating costs. I'm trying to, trying to use the word operating costs as maybe what your monthly cost would be every single month if you were a normal business out there paying for telephone, paying for, you know, whatever. Today, telephone is generally cell phones, so that's probably off the table. There was a, there was a, also, maybe, maybe a third issue was, was property taxes identified in the contract stating that the purchaser, B D M, was responsible for property taxes. And as of this last year or for this calendar year, property taxes are currently being paid. So for the last however many years that this contract's been in force, the property taxes have not been paid. So this is what I'm saying. Is there a reach back on property taxes or can that be thrown in for a negotiated settlement? You know, we'll give this, you give that, we settle with this. And, and that's why I think, you know, we can go to, we can go to, we can go the legal route and we can list all the damages from dating back to the beginning of the contract if we want. We can let a judge decide. And, and that's, that's rolling the dice, in my opinion. You never know how they're gonna, generally, they, they split the baby in half. So it's, it's never. Uh, you never know how they're gonna, generally, they, they split the baby in half, so it's, uh, it's never, never usually ends up very well going to court. But, um, but at any rate, um, it's, uh, I, you know, when we came up with the CAM amount here, I think it was a very reasonable amount. And, uh, and I would say it's, uh, you know, in recognition of the fact that the city has never billed us for, uh, electricity, never billed us for internet, never billed us for these things. We felt that the four fifty a month was a reasonable amount to, to catch up with at this point. And moving forward. And I think the, the, uh, the business had indicated they wanted to stay there five more years. That could be part of the agreement, that, um, that that be part of it as well. So I, I kind of lay it out there, yes, there's a lot of different options. And my hope is that, um, that there's people that'll settle on the easiest path of least resistance and move forward. So that anyone coming in the future saying, "Yeah, but they, but no, we settled on this." And, and everybody agreed that that was, um, you know, that the path forward on this. So that's kind of my hope. My hope is that we, um, stop spending staff time researching and regurgitating and, and trying to figure out, uh, different things over and over and over again. Every new council member that comes in wants an update, uh, you wanted an update on, on information. I mean, it's just the nature of the beast. And so it takes up a lot of time. And if we can come to a reasonable, um, uh, you know, agreement and, um, you know, for a certain period of time, great, I think everybody wins in the process.
Have we, um, brought this to the league and talked to them about it at all?
We have not, we have not brought it to the league. The league and, um, uh, our city attorney can, can, um, update me on that. The league is generally a defense, uh, scenario, so if we are late and named in a lawsuit, they provide the defense through the, uh, the, the trust. League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust.
The reason I ask is because they really frown on if this turns out to be like a breaking contract deal. Because that could cost us our rate and it'd raise our insurance costs for the city too.
Again, I, I don't think you can break a contract when it's not defined in the contract.
Well, that's, that's, I know what, I just want to make sure we're
Right.
going the right way here.
I mean-
Your thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, I don't have the answer to your question. I can look into it. I spent four years working at the league. I understand that they, um, they typically handle more traditional tort liability claims. But that does not necessarily mean that they won't cover a contractual liability claim. Like I said, I don't know and I'll happily look into it.
Is that true though, and Jacob, in terms of, um, they're more de- defense and not offense legal?
Oh, that's certainly correct.
Yeah.
Absolutely correct.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna put my two cents in here. I did meet with Mr. Mundell Senior and, um, I think, and it's hard, he thinks he's doing everything right. I don't agree, um, with everything. I think, um, every business in the world would love to have a free place, free, you know, overhead. I mean, that is a dream come true. And I agree that the contract does not say it's supposed to be free. However, there is that issue of interest owed him that we really need to research. I don't know how far you've gotten into that, gone to banks or whatever and gotten that kind of information. But we need to find that out before we go legal or not legal. I'd personally prefer a negotiation contract. I think four hundred and fifty dollars a month is still a steal. It's like almost free in today's rates. But, um, I think they're going to be done within five years anyway, so that's my two cents.
Everybody knows my position on this. I don't think taxpayer dollars should have ever been used in any way, shape or form to pay the utilities here. I don't know why it was not brought forth sooner. I do not know why it was mo- not more transparent through the years. It's the job of City Council to be a watchdog for the community's money. And in this case, once we identified that tax dollars were being spent, I can't find a reason why it should have been being spent for twenty-one years. I don't know why it is being spent. Shouldn't have been done in two thousand and four and it shouldn't have been done and it should be going on right now. The city and their taxpayers have a right to know exactly where their money is being spent. They also have a right to know or a right to say no and have their voices heard. It's apparent that half the city, at least, did not have any idea that tax dollars were being spent in this way. Now, I didn't come here to fight residents. I came here to fight for residents. And this is something that going into the future, when these bills come up to be paid, I don't know if I can vote to approve them because I don't agree with taxpayer dollars being spent this way. Not for twenty-one years. There may have been a time when this would have been a temporarily thing that might have been all right, where the city would have benefited from a contract like this. But as of right now, the city's losing money. Twenty-one years to do a development is, I, I've never even heard of a development going on this long. It's one heck of a great deal, and it is. But at the same time, to think that the only thing I have to worry about in my business is showing up, that's, that's, it's an unheard of deal. I think the taxpayers deserve better than this, I really do. I mean, it's, it comes down to ethics, fundamentals, and what's right and wrong here. And I, I can't find any excuse whatsoever for taxpayer dollars to be used for twenty-one years. I just can't. And that's something that needs to be stopped. I mean, we're all, we're negotiating in good faith here. That four fifty is, I don't know, take it to any business or any developer in this city and, and they jump on it. I don't know why it's not being looked at as, "Thank you, sounds like a good deal yet, we're going to continue on." But what I'm hearing is that if we try to do this, it's got to go legal. So, a business that has been given free rent for twenty-one years and has not had to pay any utilities is going to sue this city or fight legally, I, I, I don't know what business class that ever came out of, but I've never even heard of anything like that. Nothing like that. And that's what it comes down to. I've had free rent and I've had all my bills or, or utilities paid in this development. And yet, I'm mad at the city and I'm mad at student coun- uh, at council, City Council for bringing it up. I don't know what else to say about this. I really don't. And that's how I feel about it. It's a councilman's job to bring up things to the attention of this city when they find out things where tax dollars could be, could be very well looked at as, as, as being, uh, well, what do you call it, misappropriated, misuse, um, not transparent. And that's wrong. It's just wrong. You can't use taxpayers' dollars like that and not benefit the city at all. There's no benefit right now, we're losing money. That's how I feel.
Anything, Jim?
I agree exactly what Mr. Miller said. I mean, I've never, ever heard of a business that doesn't have to pay anything. And yet, this was brought to our attention, we researched it. Hard to believe, but we found out that that's true. And I feel the same way as Mr. Miller, it's like totally wrong, totally wrong.
So what, uh, as a resolve, I don't know, I-
I mean, I, I would like, sorry, sorry, Mayor, I, I would like to find something that's fair and something that we can approach and do because we have no, no means, we don't, we don't want to attack BDM. That, that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to prevent certain things from happening to city funds, okay? And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that if a councilman can abstain from voting on issues about Whispering Pines or Whispering Aspen, I'm sorry, and, uh, turn around during the bill voting time and okay bills to be paid for this business, to me, that's not abstaining. I mean, you're actually okaying bills that fund a family business here. And you can go down the line, electric, water, sewer, I mean, wifi, all this stuff, that's not abstaining. We have to be fair, okay? And I agree, we need to be fair with this. We also need to honor older city commitments that we have. And this is an older commitment that the city made here. But at the same time, the taxpayers of this city have to come first. The contracts that we have in this city have to benefit this city. We cannot go backwards. We're trying to do something here that, we're trying to fix something that's come to our attention. This isn't an attack, this, this is preventative from happening in the future and anywhere down the line.
No, you're fine. Well, I would suggest maybe myself, Mr. Look and one other councilperson sit down with the BDM one last time and see if we can iron out this. And then put it to bed. I don't care who else wants to go with me and Matt, but if BDM's willing to sit down and would just try and hash something out here and get to a happy medium somewhere that we all can live with, I'd like to try and see that, but that's up to you guys.
I have no problem with that.
Brian Senior, you have a problem with that?
Well, if we're gonna do that, if we're going to do that, then I would like, uh, Artie, Suzanne to be the two councilpeople. And we can sit down and have a frank discussion about my contract, why it was put in place. I've always been willing to work with the city. But the way I have been attacked, my son has been attacked, it's just incredibly bad. Makes this council look bad. I've been doing business in this city for twenty-two years. I lived in this city probably way before you guys did. I lived right across the street for eighteen years from that development. I watched it go in. I watched it fail. I watched it become a cesspool. I watched the community center get destroyed. The city did nothing. I came by and I made an offer to the city. The city accepted it. Took five years to work out this contract. And you say this contract has holes in it? It's a rock solid contract. I am willing to sit down with you.
Thank you.
Well, I would propose it be more of a closed session type of an event where we're all together and we can all hear everything because there's a good chance you, when things go from first, first time hearing to second time, we're not going to hear everything. And I think we need all opinions to hear what he has to say.
Mr. Mayor, we should check with the attorney on whether we can close for this type of topic. I don't think it's for acquisition of property or contract negotiation possibly, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Look, at this point, um, Mr. Look is certainly correct. We don't fall within the categories for closed meeting for the purpose of property acquisition or the more traditional aspects of closed meeting. And, um, it's a judgment call as to whether or not it invokes the litigation exception to the open meeting law. It's something we can look into and follow up with you as to whether or not it's possible for us to enter a closed session, but right now, I'd rather not just make a call from the chair.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can, um, the, yourself and Suzanne have been identified as the, as the negotiators, if you will. I need to double check what the committee structure is. We certainly don't want a majority of a committee, um, you know, discussing this. So I'm not, I don't recall if the two of you are on a specific committee or not, but that may have to change. The, uh, you know, who can, who can be in this meeting that's not a public meeting. So I'll, I'll research that in the morning and shoot everyone out an email.
Okay, you, let's do that and then, uh, move forward and, uh, once you get the information that, get all of us the information that we'll move forward on. That sound good? All right, moving on, four point oh.
Uh, four point oh, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, we've had a, um, shall we say, a, a property with challenges, uh, recently here that, um, that I think, um, one of the complainants came in was, um, was, was pleased with the outcome, and I think they're still working towards that. And part of that discussion, um, then came about with, um, whether or not we have a crime-free community ordinance. Now, we have, uh, nuisance ordinances, uh, that are currently on the books. But from what I understand, a crime-free ordinance would give a little bit more, um, let me see if I can pull it up here. A little bit more, um, teeth to be able to, um, let me get on to that one. To be able to handle some of these properties. So the question then becomes, um, it's on this screen, bear with me one second. The question then becomes, do we want to go down this road of a crime-free ordinance? You know, we're dealing with junk vehicles, there were some junk vehicles that were there. And some of the ordinances apply to this and, uh, some apply to cleanup. But we're kind of dealing with, and blight as well as you can see here, but we're kind of dealing with, with squatters. You know, people that, some were invited, some were not. And then that kind of led to some of these, uh, issues that you're seeing here as far as our, um, ordinances currently identify. What I will tell you is that the crime-free ordinance has its legal challenges. Uh, there are groups out there, ACLU and others, that, um, that believe that they're put in place to, um, to essentially be, um, uh, used against certain people groups, maybe is a good way to put it. And, um, and so oftentimes, they're challenged. And so when we're talking about, uh, risk, right, we're talking about ordinances on the books that, um, that could potentially produce lawsuits or produce, uh, you know, uh, challenges legally. And, um, and so this is kind of the, the risk, right, that, that at least I've been warned about in terms of crime-free ordinances. And if you want to go down this road, we can certainly go down it. We can investigate what, I think Coon Rapids has a crime-free ordinance. They've, they may have a tolerance for legal, uh, challenges. Or they may have drafted it in such a way that that reduces some of those challenges. But the question for me, as I was kind of thinking through this, was, um, how many do we have? You know, in my time here, I think we've, we've got one for sure, and we may have another one. But it's not like we're dealing with a dozen of these things every year, right? I mean, it's, um, it's somewhat limited and it's- I mean, it's somewhat limited in its scope. And it may be something that, while it's easier for our law enforcement to go in and prosecute violators, that that need just really isn't there quite yet for this. But I wanted to bring it up, kind of get your, you know, kind of take, get the council's take on the timeframe. I know that the individual that came to the podium was not pleased with the amount of time it took. And I think our law enforcement was very clear as to what the sheriff can and can't do. And so, if your ordinances aren't specifically written that empower the sheriff with a crime-free type of ordinance, then you potentially have a, you know, a longer process to try and resolve these properties. So, I bring it up, I, it's not like we don't have nuisance ordinances. I don't think we necessarily enforce a lot of them, but we can certainly look at, you know, we are, just so folks know, we're a complaint-based city, so if, for example, there's junk vehicles in the yard and the neighbor doesn't like that, they can come in and fill out a complaint form, and then we'll follow up on that. But we aren't actively or proactively going out and saying, "You have junk vehicles, you need to remove these." So, I want to just kind of get your input on whether you want to go down this road of a crime-free, and if you feel it's warranted, and if not, we can, we can kind of play it by ear if we start to see more of these type of problem properties.
Well, my thinking is, yeah, let's do it, but then again, I don't want to impede on freedoms of our residents either, so it would have to be very specific and be very oriented to obvious crime, because I'm all about freedom pretty much anyway, so I care about our residents' freedom.
I'd like to see us get a hold of Coon Rapids', look at it and talk to them and see how often they actually use it, you know, and for further discussion before we really proceed to have staff look at that.
I feel in the situation that this took place, that we have to let the professionals handle it. I mean, we can make decisions, but I'm not an expert as a sheriff. And I had conversations with Derek before, and there's certain protocol that they gotta follow, so they just can't run in there, which I'm sure they'd like to, I would too. But unfortunately, with laws and rules that we have, it has to be done in a certain way. And if it could have been done faster, that'd been fantastic, but it wasn't. So, I think it needs to be left to the professionals on all these. That's my opinion.
Well, I agree with that, Jim. I think, you know, I think the reason we're looking at this is probably because of the county sheriff's office.
Was there?
They were restrained from doing a lot of things, and we found a way to do it otherwise, but this was just brought up as adding some kind of teeth or do it to move it along further. But I, you know, I do agree with what you're saying.
Okay. We can certainly reach out to Coon Rapids', we can get their take on it, maybe they can have somebody speak to us about it as well, and also try and dig into, I know the League of Minnesota Cities has done some work on this as well, some flyers we can get out, kind of identifying some of the challenges potentially, and we can go from there.
Everybody fine with that?
Yep.
All right, nothing further. I'll close the council work meeting.